It is four o'clock. We have a few technical difficulties, but the clock is not one of them. So we'll go ahead and call to order the March 21st, 2016 meeting of the Salina City Commission. We'll have a roll call, please.
Mayor Blanchard.
Here.
Commissioner Crawford.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hardy.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Okay, at this time, I would ask that all who are here and able to please stand and join in the Pledge of Allegiance and observe a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Okay, there are no awards and proclamations on today's agenda, so we'll move into Citizens' Forum, and this is an opportunity for anyone to come up and speak regarding an item that is not on today's agenda, and we will just ask that you leave your name and address, and please limit your comments to five minutes. So if there's anybody who wishes to speak at Citizens' Forum, it is open. Okay, and seeing none, we'll move the agenda along, and we'll hear the consent agenda, please.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of March 14th, 2016. 6.2, approve the 2016 vehicles and equipment plan purchases as recommended. 6.3, approve change order number one for the sanitary sewer cleaning and inspection project number 1-5-3074 to Mayor Specialty Services LLC in the amount of $33,446. Item 6.4, award the contract for the 2016 micro-surfacing project number 63094 to Vance Brothers Incorporated in the amount of $679,595.9 with the 5% construction contingency of $33,979.75. 6.5, award the contract for the 2016 Batumana Seal project number 63084 to Circle C Paving and Construction LLC in the amount of $271,210.55 with a 5% construction contingency of $10,680.53. Item 6.6, adopt resolution number 16-7332, amending Article III of the City of Salina Comprehensive Fee Schedule to establish a fee for Certificate of Compatibility Applications. 6.7, approve the purchase of four traffic video detection systems from Gaddy Sales Company Incorporated in the amount of $40,416. And 6.8, approve the contract with William and Jolene Whitaker for the sale of the vacant lot addressed as 234 South Phillips and for giving the demolition cost incurred previously.
Okay, are there any items on the consent agenda, Commissioner, that would like to have removed or amended?
I'd like to remove item 6.7 from the consent agenda.
Okay, any others? Okay, entertain an option? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the consent agenda with the exception of item 6.7.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to accept the consent agenda minus item 6.7. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? That motion carries 5-0, and if Mr. Stack is here, and there he is. And if Commissioner, you'd just kind of like to address the issue at hand?
Sure. Yeah, you need to go through the whole thing?
No, I just have a couple of questions for you. This system has obvious advantages over the loop detection system, and I was just curious, is there a plan to modify the intersections all over town with this type of system?
It's a good question, and it's something we're kind of in constant, I guess, looking at that very issue. Some of our traffic cameras have done well, some of them not so well, depending on where they're at and where they're located and the versions that we've had over the last few years. So, and it depends on if it's a concrete road or an asphalt road, and how often we have to mill the loops up. There's just a lot of factors that go into them, so I guess I'd say we typically are two to four intersections a year, but I'd like to say, yeah, that'll get us a system that's all video camera at some point, but the problem is they wear out, or they just plain don't work in some situations, so we just don't foresee the, always, at some point, always having the video camera system. The radar system is something we're trying as well, and then sometimes loops just work pretty well for some of our low-volume intersections. These things are pretty expensive, and so loops are fairly reasonably priced and pretty easy for our guys to do if we don't have a lot of other issues with the intersections. So it's a long answer to your question.
Right.
I'm sure one advantage of the cameras is they can see out further, so they're supposed to be, research suggests that they're more efficient than a loop system. That's why loop might work on an isolated intersection, but the cameras are better with busier intersections.
Yeah, the system I'm most familiar with, I guess, would be at Santa Fe and Republic, and sometimes I wonder if the thing is working properly or not.
Yeah.
And I don't know if, you know, ice accumulation affects the efficacy of the kind of system.
It does, yeah. It's really, if you have one that you're concerned with, just call it in, because it's one of the things that they malfunction, or they don't see during a certain time of day. It's just, they're kind of, that's the thing we don't like about them, is they're just sometimes randomly unreliable. But most, I mean, for the most part, they work pretty well, but if we have to know about the problem, and sometimes it's 4:30 in the morning with one of my staff who drives Ohio every day and lets me know which one's not working at 4:30 in the morning. Well, we don't know if that's darkness, light, something else. It's just an odd time, and we haven't been able to recreate, so it's...
I hope they're not letting you know at 4:30 in the morning.
Not till about 6:00 when they get in. Yeah, anyway, yeah. So anyway, yeah, it's a constant challenge for us to, just if there's an issue with a certain intersection, just call it in, we'll check it out.
So it's not the silver bullet either, then?
It's not. I would like to see it, we'd like to say radar is, but it's just, it's new. We just started trying it on I-35, and it's more expensive. We think it might be better in the long run, but we're not interested in paying a lot more to try it at every intersection until we're really sure it's working. These have gotten, we think, better over the years. They're getting a little cheaper. This year, it's actually, this, one of our four-leg intersections is about $1,000 cheaper than last year, so we feel like it's getting a little better for us, so. That's a really long answer to your question. Yeah, we continue to, it's a challenging process, so any issues you have with them, let us know, because, I mean, Mayor Blanchard let us know about one last week that just wasn't working very well, so we have to keep on it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions of staff at this time? Okay, do we have any public comment? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the Commission for Action on this item.
I move we approve item 6.7 under the consent agenda.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve item 6.7 of the consent agenda, and I'll just add, to approve the purchase of four traffic video detection systems from Gaddy Sales Company Incorporated in the amount of $40,416. Is there any further discussion on this item at this time? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Okay. I have a quick question, Dan, if you wouldn't mind, because I was not going to pull it off of the consent agenda, but I did have a question in concern to micro-surfacing.
Yes, sir.
And I'm going to ask it in having the drive-over survey done of road conditions throughout the community, and a couple of phone calls. Are you familiar with the streets up around Mariposa in that development?
Yeah, they're put in in the late '90s, really, 2000s. Is that about?
Yeah, they're really, they're really rough.
They're rough?
Yeah, they're very rough, and I just wasn't, it kind of almost to the point where it seems like it was going through a mill and inlay, and they got the mill done, but not the inlay.
The big aggregate rock, you think, big asphalt aggregate?
Yeah, that's probably a good description, yeah.
Typical asphalt from that area that's had bigger rock in it, and it wears on top, and then you get a rougher jagged, kind of jagged rock surface to a certain extent.
Yeah, and my question was, is would, how would that, how would something like that, because I'm not sure, it didn't see that there were a lot of potholes or cracks or all those other things. How would that generally show up in the, what kind of condition would that be considered in our, sort of in our hierarchy of street condition?
It wouldn't have a major defect. If it doesn't have a lot of cracks, it would have, probably, there's a couple of different distresses, is what they call them in asphalt, but it'd be either polished aggregate or maybe spalling, but spalling really isn't, doesn't sound like it's quite that. Washed or polished aggregate, so that you see actually the aggregate, you don't see the oil, the asphalt isn't smooth, it's kind of jagged and rocky. So I guess it would show up, but that wouldn't show up as a major defect, because it'd be a pretty easy fix by a micro. That'd be a really good fix for that, because it would cover that and smooth it.
If we could maybe just, I just want to put that on your radar, because it was put on mine, and I understand that a number of neighbors up there kind of had questions about that, and so maybe if we can be a little out ahead of that one and...
Yeah, is that on our list for this year?
I didn't see it on there.
Okay. It's something we can sure look at for one of the next few years.
Yeah.
We are getting into some residential areas. It seems like the last few years.
I noticed you're getting into some neighborhood streets. Thank you.
Yep, there's some pretty old streets out there, so we're at least trying to get into them.
Right, and mainly so maybe we can help provide them with an answer as to...
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay.
Very good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and we do have no administrative business, so we'll move to development business.
Item 8.1, discussion and direction on the live Salina housing assessment and strategic plan.
Okay, is this Mr. Hobbie?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, can be sure today we bring back to you our housing strategic plan, and we have some requests for you to help us start setting some policy statements. As you mentioned there, and as we mentioned last week in our study session with Mr. Schukert, we are ready to start, not necessarily developing the plan as a whole, because we know the plan's already changing on us, and so we would like to start setting some policy statements that we can put together, and staff then can start developing some programs that would help introduce and study and work on, and maybe eventually solve some of those policy statements you have. So what I did is I took out of our Chapter III of our strategic plan, I took the five main points that Mr. Schukert gave to you. I believe they start on page 46 and start working through that process, and I took some of his comments that he gave us at the meeting, as well as some of the comments out of the plan itself, and made some subnotes. And so, like in Section One, or Point One, as he calls them, he's talking about addressing and resolving the issue of urban growth policy, along with risk sharing and infrastructure to meet community housing demands and development goals. And underneath that, there are four different specific areas that he has suggested to us to look at, and we'd like for your input on those, each of those four areas. We think the policy statement should be Point One, or Point Two, Three, Four, or Five, and then start looking at some of the statements below that. So we'd ask for your input today, and hopefully you've had a little bit of time to look at this chart or framework that Mr. Schukert has put together for us, and we can start putting together some statements, start working on some of our projects. So I'll kind of leave it open to you to start helping guide us in the direction you'd like for us to go.
Okay, great. I'll ask for questions for staff, but first, I kind of, I've got a question for the city manager at this time, and maybe we can kind of move this discussion further along and kind of clarify. But during the study session last time, I kind of brought the question up to you about what are we hoping to get out of this study? And I think that we're looking at perhaps to get some policy decisions, but mainly direction and to see how this, how this study kind of works with some of our other documents, whether those be the comprehensive plan or strategic plan, or some of those other guiding documents that we use, but also the staff relies on quite heavily as well. So just sort of as a follow-up to that question from last week, and then looking at this, what are some of the, what are some of the main points we need to look at and maybe next steps as far as how best to utilize this study?
Okay. I think the first thing is, and Gary did a good job of kind of hitting those strategic points, but you're probably not going to feel like you can get that deep this early at this point in time. I wouldn't expect you to anyway, but those are something you can start percolating on. Really, the very first thing is to say, are we finished with the report, and are we ready to accept it? And what that would mean is, is we would bring it back as a resolution of acceptance, could do it in a week or two weeks, whatever works. And what that would mean is, is it becomes a document that's simply there to assist you, that's conscious in your thinking every time you deal with a housing issue. And the resolution, we could word it basically that says, hey, when we're dealing with a resolution, or a housing issue, here's a report. Staff would be expected to look at it and to make reference if it addresses that particular housing issue, and that's all it is. It's just referencing it, so at least you know what it says, and then you can make your decision based on that and any other factors you want. That's the easiest first step, is just simply to accept it in that form, and allow us to do that. The next step is to think about, okay, are there specific pieces in here where you say, that is, as a governing body, that is important enough, and it's focused in enough, that we'd like to at least take that, might need to play with a little bit, and create a policy statement about that particular aspect of housing development. You could do that, whether it's special assessments or whatever the topic is, you could do that. But I think we'd want to bring those topics back and have probably more detailed conversations about those if you should decide that you want to create a policy out of one of them. Because once you create a policy, you're getting into more of a regulatory role versus just simply, hey, here's a document, it'll help me make a decision on something. So that would be a step as well. The other thing is, is there's a question about implementation. At some point, there's more of an action-oriented aspect to some of this, and we probably need to come back and say, okay, what do we want to sort of chew off first as far as things that we think we would have a role, either individually or collectively, working with your building community and so forth, and start talking about implementation. Me personally, I'd like to, I'd like to spend some time with our residential development community to get their thoughts on what they think is reasonable, practical, what the market could support, and so forth, because, I mean, they're the ones spending the money out there to build this stuff, and they take on that risk. So at some point here, fairly quickly, getting that input's really helpful, I think, from a staff perspective, because it can help us have a conversation with you as well. So those are kind of three different approaches, but I think initially, just simply an acceptance that presumes that you're comfortable with the basic premise of the document and what it's supposed to do, but an acceptance of the document, and know that we'll reference it, so you at least know what it says and what it's supposed to mean when you deal with housing. Doesn't mean you have to, it doesn't limit you, so you don't have to do exactly what it says. That's not the point. The point is, is you ask for someone from the outside with some expertise and knowledge to look at our community, give you their thoughts. We just incorporate their thoughts as part of your decision-making, and that's it.
Okay. All right, thank you for that bit. Any questions for staff?
Just on the last part of the statement, when we incorporate this report into our decision-making, to what extent does our accepting that report obligate us to need strongly consider implementing some of the suggestions?
Yeah, I would say absolutely zero. And the reason I say that is because we didn't, in this case, the scope of the work of the consultant wasn't to say, wasn't to find exactly what, say, each of you or collectively what you want to do necessarily. It was to provide their thoughts based on their analysis, give them to you, so you could then incorporate into your thinking. So there's no obligatory aspect whatsoever in this, but it's something that when we deal with housing, you should expect to see in a commission report, that we say, hey, your housing report does address this particular factor, and here's what it said, and that's just one factor you can incorporate if you should choose with what could be a lot of other factors, because you always have different circumstances. But you shouldn't feel any obligation to, the only obligation would be to simply know that we've addressed it for you, and that you have that in your thinking, not to follow it like a regulatory manual or anything like that. It's not what it's intended to be.
If we're planning for future growth, then assumptions and predictions made in this report would simply be an opinion?
Yes.
And that's something which policies should be based on?
That's correct. Now, again, if there are certain points you should choose to want to look at from a policy perspective, we can have those particular conversations and then decide, okay, what would that policy look like? Does it look exactly like the recommendation in that one section or subsection in the report, or does it look different? In that case, we pull stuff out, and we actually create a separate policy for you, and again, the document becomes a basis of that or a piece of that, but you don't, the document doesn't become the policy. You just would pull out and create a policy if you should choose to want to do that on any particular issue in the future.
Well, and I think that's what he said to us. He said, what was his name?
Marty Schukert.
Yeah, he's the guy. But anyway, he said to use this as a guide.
Yes.
And not policy. And I took quite a lot of notes, and that's what I understood him to say. And I think we should, I think we should accept this as a guide. I think it was a very good study, and I think we should accept it.
And I think the five of us will accept it as a guide. I think the paper tomorrow morning will give the casual reader the impression that we adopted everything that was in that report.
Well, you could ask the reporter to make sure they're clear. Now, I will say on behalf of the reporter that they don't get to write their own headlines, so we talked about that earlier today.
I think Tim's pretty good.
But I think if you're specific in your motion and your actions, that it's, you're accepting it for what it is, it's acceptance of a completed project, and the only obligation is that you don't want it to fade away. You want staff to reference it if it's relevant, and then that way, you know what it says, and that's it. Again, later, what we can do is we can take these pieces that Gary's highlighted and any other pieces, and through study sessions, we can start talking about different pieces and say, is this something you feel that could help you with a policy? Do you want a policy on that? Some of it might naturally fall into policy topics that we're going to have at some point, too, but we could take you through study session, work on those pieces. But before we did that, I really feel like it'd be helpful for us to really get a good feel from our private sector folks. I think that's really helpful.
The great benefit from the housing study, one of the benefits that I took away from it, is that prior to the study, the term beachhead had never entered my mind as a concept. And now, I'm thinking about the term beachhead and what it could mean for the community, but I'm also thinking about it in terms of, well, we can do that anywhere. We can establish the beachheads. We don't, there are beachheads that are presented in the study itself, which are also worth considering probably, but, you know, we can do things like that that I had no knowledge of prior to that.
That's exactly right. The examples they have are simply that, examples of areas where the consultant felt, oh, that'd be an interesting area to look at, but it's not intended to prioritize or anything. You may look and say, hey, if we can see some success in our downtown project, maybe there's a, we can, that's a beachhead, a large beachhead, and we're kind of focusing off of that and seeing how far that goes, that you could do that as well. So you should not feel locked in whatsoever with any of that.
Right. And I'll just add on the beachhead. I think a real critical part of that was the consultant laying out the criteria that went into where you might want to establish a beachhead. And he had a number of different criteria in there that I thought were very helpful, and that was high visibility, projects that would really capture a lot of what the community has asked for and desires, and that pretty much was laid out in the comp plan and other community discussions. And I think it also, you know, we can expand upon those things that also say, are they reaching price points that we need to hit? And are some of the other outcomes affected by those better and more able to create, you know, spinoff than others might? And so I think the criteria is helpful so that we can help to establish those areas that we, being in the community more, see as viable, and then as city manager mentioned, maybe work with some of the builder community, or going out and recruiting developers, that might be their expertise if we don't have that here. So it gives us an idea about what we have, where we need, what we need to have, and what, and start placing some priorities on some of those sites. And so I think we, I think one of the things that we can do immediately is start to maybe use that criteria to start making a list of potential beachheads. And I think, as you said, some of the ones that the consultant put in there could be certainly part of that mix, but it gives us something to maybe start to prioritize from and establish some sort of, you know, it helps to establish a rating system on, this is what you want to look for. So I find that particularly helpful in the beachhead concept.
And he also mentioned an incremental approach on beachheads, very slow and methodical kind of thing. And to me, I just think we need to get to building some housing.
Right. Well, here's my take on the housing study, and I won't go into full critique on it, but I think that all of us, I think, would probably agree that it's a completed document, and to not accept it as a completed document would almost say, we're either not going to accept it, or we want some changes to be made. And I think we've gone far enough down the road to say, it's okay to accept it as a completed document. You know, it has five different sections in it. It has existing conditions, which I think really forces us to take a critical look at what our existing condition is. And that first section isn't pretty. It shows that we are missing in a lot of categories that we really need to hit. A big part of that is affordability. And so I think, you know, that section, I particularly like some of the infill strategies, but I think we need to further develop those. And the fifth section was really good on, it's kind of like the bridging forward and what are some of our next steps. And that's kind of how I see this project and the role, and Marty saying, use it as a guide. I think we have a comp plan that has an implementation matrix on it. We've got a strategic plan that kind of has outlined what our goals are. And I think we can use this tool to kind of say, what, how does this fit with those two tools, and how do we get to some of those goals that we've looked at long-term in the comp plan and also short-term in our strategic plan. And I think this helps us get to some of that. I think also we need to use it as a base for policy discussions, in particular, on special assessments. But I think that there are certain things in there that even Marty talked about last time, that, and I know concerns that I have on, what are our long-term maintenance obligations on some of these, and what does a fiscal impact analysis look like long-term for the community, and are we building in the right place and putting our resources in the right parts to support beachheads? So, because I think you can look at new construction as well as a beachhead. So I think that we, I'd like to see us adopt this as a finished product, but I'd like to see us continue to work on providing good policy for some of the areas, but also to augment and support the comprehensive plan and the strategic plan. Any further comments or questions for staff at this time? If not, we'll open it up for public comment. Nope, we're open for public comment. Not everybody at once.
Good afternoon.
Hello.
Mike Hoppick, 914 Oak Lane. I appreciate the comments made about the housing study. I do think it gives us a great direction. I know, Mayor Blanchard, you were out of the meeting last week because of some other issues.
Unfortunately.
Unfortunately.
Fortunately, not a big issue.
It wasn't, right, yeah. One of the things that I think you brought up about, you know, whether we're bringing another developer to help with beachheads or whatever, I know one of the things that we've discussed as a development community is not having the expertise as far as doing the infill and the redevelopment. And I think I brought this up last week, is, you know, maybe something where the city commission needs to look at, how are we going to fund, you know, doing some infill redevelopment, and also, do we need a paid staff person, and who pays for that, I don't know, to help lead that, lead us down that direction? Because right now, as we've discussed before, we know how to do greenfield development. That infill revitalization is a whole different ballgame, and something we do need to look at, but I do believe at some point, we're going to need some expertise on that to help us.
Okay. Appreciate that. That would probably be part of the conversation as we move forward on that. All right, thank you. Okay, great. Well, I appreciate the comment, and we'll bring it back up for if there's any further discussion, or if we simply want to...
I don't know if this would be part of the housing study discussion or not, but just today, I received an article about a new type of housing material that's, would enable a contractor to build a home for $20,000. That would both be affordable and desirable. And I was thinking, well, that's a novel idea. I haven't had a chance to really dive into the article itself, but it said that it would require cities to have a change in their thought about what a house should look like, you know, or the types of materials or the joys that should be required. And so, to me, that sounded like something that would be very interesting and... and to at least consider perhaps. But it would also require maybe a little bit change in mindset, too, about what is a house?
Okay. I, I think one of the, just kind of speak to that a little bit. I think that one of the things that we're going to be able to use this study for, and I think what you're referring to is, it would probably, to boil it down, would be innovation. We've kind of looked at building single-family detached houses, 1,500 square foot and up, for the last 25 years. Or low-income housing tax credit use of, for building low-income housing. There is a vast middle between those two. And I think one of the things that, when you just kind of focus on the two, you don't innovate. And I think one of the things, there are a lot of innovations going around that, on house sizes, on where they're located, on clustering, and things like this. And I think one of the things that this housing study can help do is to help us kind of think outside of the box, and how do we start to innovate? Like I said, I think that the existing conditions portion of the study really emphasized and showed that we really don't have a whole lot of product that isn't either single-family attached, meaning a duplex, or a single-family detached, that's in the 15 to 2,000 square foot range. So, you know, we had to have, like, more in-depth conversations about what affordability means. And, and some of the other, how do we, how do we provide housing for? One of the things that really wasn't addressed that much was from non-conventional households. And so, there are a lot of things that we, that we really need to look deeper into. And so, I think that that probably fits into, into that category.
Right.
So, okay. We're not going to break a record today, but go ahead.
Yeah. For, for today, just general direction's fine for us. And if part of it's acceptance, we can bring you back a resolution to do that in next week or the following week, whichever.
Okay.
And then also, if you just, in your motion, if you'd like to say, you know, to identify, to begin identifying some policy-oriented and operational topics for future discussion, and also to start working with the private sector, get their thoughts and opinions about market aspects, market viability, market risks, so forth. Just as part of general direction, we'd be happy to take that direction as well.
Okay. And just a quick question for Mr. Hobby. I appreciate the list that you and Marty put together on.
Sure.
On diff, and I think that it's a good outline for us to kind of move forward on. But just maybe the two of you, get your ideas on, would it be possible to get, to have a study session, but also, as part of that, to have prepared by staff, some different ideas on staff's feelings about the study, and where they think really the, where they see how we're, how we're, how we're currently staffed, what our best direction is forward? And then perhaps if we do look at potential staff increases, what that might do and where that might also lead? And I think, you know, if we could have study sessions that might address those, do you think that that would be helpful?
I think that'd be very wise, to tell you the truth, because what you are telling me, and what I'm hearing, and some of the ideas that I'm pulling from the plan is that it's not just accepting a housing strategic plan. It may involve getting, changing our zoning code to allow for a smaller square footage of lot requirement for a residential structure. If we're going to build a unique, smaller live-work space or something, we're going to have to change some changes in our zoning codes. And that also may affect our utilities. By having more structures, more houses, in a smaller combined area, it may require us to start looking at our utility infrastructure and say, this is a better area than this area to put in multifamily or small live-work spaces, or whatever the case may be. It also then starts talking about our street sizes. Do we allow no driveways onto a street? Or do we allow driveways onto a street? Or do we cluster driveways so that in the old-style homes, when we were first born and raised, that we had a split driveway, and two houses use the same driveway? Are we going to restrict some of the street actions and activities? So, it's not just a housing product. It just, it develops everything we have infrastructure-wise in our community. So, I know that with the planning commission, what they've been doing the last two, three months, six months, almost to a year now, and the different developments that are coming into the community, some of the statements, some of the policies that are in this guide, the strategic plan, will come to your decision-making pretty quickly, within, within the next month. Such as, how do we use special infrastructure assessment processes and those type of things? So, yes, I think there's some priorities, or some areas in each one of the points that Marty has put into his, his plan, that will say, we need to address this one fairly quickly. And so, we may look at addressing them within the next month or two, or six weeks, or two months, or that one's a two-year project, so we need to get some more information. So, accepting the plan being completed, we have no problem with that, and doing the resolution. And we would be glad to start, if you have some input on specific items that you'd like for us to bring ahead quicker, circle those and hand them back in to me, or something like that, and get them back to me. And we'll, we'll start to focus on those in the beginning and start working from that. Otherwise, I can tell you, we've got some issues that we need to address from this plan. Special assessments is going to be the big one, whether the next fix, I don't know, three weeks to a month. So, they'll be coming to you pretty quick, so.
Okay. Very good. All right. Well, I think we're, we're pretty well set to take action on this then. And, and so, whoever feels bold enough to step up.
Well, I guess nobody else is going to. I move we adopt the housing study as a guide for our city, and then work with developers and builders in study sessions to more clearly define where we want to be with that study.
Second?
Could I just ask, does that wording imply acceptance of its recommendations?
As a guide.
I said as a guide, in my motion, yeah.
I think that's fine. We'll formalize the action in the resolution, so, to what it, what it means. So, at that point, that works fine.
Yeah. Further discussion? Have a motion, a second, further discussion? My only thing would just say, when you bring that back, I'm kind of looking at something kind of more as, more general, as accepting it as a finished work product.
Mm-hmm. Right. Yeah, that, we can carve it that way. I think the, I think the word adopt was, and that was meant, I'll have to ask the motion maker. But Commissioner Crawford, you weren't, when you said adopt, you weren't, you didn't mean adopt it verbatim as a...
I, I almost did say that. I should have known better. Okay. Do you want me to redo that?
No, if you just tell us it means the same as accept, that's all we need to know.
It means accepting, it means accepting the study as a guide for our city, so that we can get on with housing.
Thank you.
Is that good?
Yeah.
No?
That's, that's fine. We know what you mean, so we can, yeah, we'll bring it back.
He doesn't like it.
Well, I just...
I got a second.
Well, we're doing a resolution, so.
Well, okay.
I mean, the resolution is kind of how, what our intended use of the...
Yeah, and I think from the conversation, we have a pretty good feel for what that means. And what it means is that when you have a housing issue, you expect staff to look at that study, to see if there's a section or sections that relate to your topic, and to make sure that you're aware of those through your report, so you can take that in consideration. We'll, we'll build the resolution around that.
Okay, good. Yeah, because my, just, just for the vice mayor's comfort here.
No, I'm not...
I'm not thinking about, well, we're not looking at adopting a guide. We're talking about, is it finished or not? Is it simply, are we accepting this thing as a finished work product?
Well, we paid $50,000, so I think probably it should be finished.
Okay. That was my only clarification on the motion. So, okay, so, we have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Now, you're going to bring back a resolution that basically kind of lays out...
Yeah, we'll lay out the application of the study, and how it would be applied into your future decision-making.
Okay, yeah. So, it's done. No more changes. Someone let Marty know.
We've been talking about it long enough. It needs to be done.
Okay, did you want to make that audible, or?
No.
Okay. Do we, are we clear on no?
We're clear.
Okay. No, I mean on no executive session or anything?
We can go home.
We'll move into other business, and if we don't have any other business, we'll...
Move to adjourn.
...be home fairly early.
Well, I might say that I went to the building authority board Tuesday, and we had a very good discussion on telephone, new telephone for the building, new telephones for the building. And Commissioner Hardy was there. You might have something to add, but anyway, I did that. And I was scheduled to go to the airport authority, but I got up with a sore throat from all the stuff flying around in the air, I guess, because I'm okay now. So, but it's a very good board. I think it's, I think it's a very good board now. There've been some changes on the board. I think it's a very good board.
And you're talking about building authority?
Building authority.
Right. One thing on that, because I know that that, when I was on that board for a while, boy, that phone system had been...
Awful.
Well, and it just...
It's been forever, they've been...
It kind of seemed to be a tug-of-war over not a whole lot to do about anything. So, it seems good that that's kind of resolved and...
Kind of getting better.
And moving forward. So, good, so good work on that. Okay, any other, other business? Okay, seeing none? Did I, I think I had a motion from Commissioner Hardy, and a second from Commissioner Davis to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries five zero.